Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zakeham. And President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like all guests, colleagues, and staff to please rise. As Counselor Garrison introduces our clergy for the day, who will provide the invocation, I ask everyone to remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are delighted to welcome Shawn Fedler to the Boston City Council today, accomplished by MO. Shawn is the Acting Associate Minister at Old South Church in Boston. His ministry at Old South Church supports the worship life of the congregation as well as membership and evangelist. It's 350-year anniversary this year. Before joining the leadership at Old South Church, Shawn served as Ministry Associate for Worship at the Fourth Presbyterian Church of Chicago, the second-largest Presbyterian church in the United States. Prior to that, he served as Assistant Minister to King's Chapter in Boston from 214 to 217. In preparation for ordained ministry, Shawn served in the Seattle branch of the Episcopal Service Corps, a year of volunteer and local service while living in an intentional community. Corps noted rooted in household rules of life, regular spiritual direction, discernment, and community practice. From 2011 to 2013, Shawn served as minister interim and then pastorship fellow during the which he supported the Sunday evening worship service that featured faith-sharing, storytelling by old church. Shawn is a graduate of Bridgewater State College, now university, with a Bachelor's of the Arts in Political Science and received his Master's of Divinity degree from the Boston University School of Theology. Please welcome Shawn.
Thank you. Old South Church is 350 years this year, and we have been growing up with you, the city of Boston. Old South Church hosts the Central Boston Clergy Association, which represents houses of faith in downtown Boston. This fall, we welcomed Madam President as our guest. We asked her how we can support your work and the needs of the city of Boston. And President Campbell asked us first to pray for you, as you do this work of governing, but to also hold fast to hope that the best days of the city of Boston are ahead of us. So please know that the clergy of Boston are praying for you and keeping hope. So let us pray. Oh mighty God, known to us by many names, we give you thanks for the gift of this new day, for the call of service that you place on our lives, and ask your presence to now stir among us. Help us to be ever mindful of the duty, responsibility, and joy of public service, and the trust bestowed by those who call this city home. Be with the city of Boston and with her council, that in everything they do this day and in the days to come, it will be done in a spirit of hope, generosity, and urgency. And lastly, oh God, as we live further into the season of winter and cold, keep our hearts and minds focused on the most vulnerable, the unhoused, the poor, the elderly, and those on the margins edge. We make this prayer today in the name of the one who calls us to life and life abundant, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
City of Boston and City Council. Official resolution offered by City Council at Large Althea Garrison. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes Shawn Fedler, Acting Associate Minister at Old South Church, honoring his ongoing commitment to furthering the good cause of the city of Boston, and be it further resolved that the Boston City Council extend its best wishes for continued happiness and success. That the resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to and accompanied thereof transferred by the clerk of the city of Boston, by Andrew Campbell, City Council President, and attested to by Alex Guentes, and authored by Althea Garrison.
Madam Clerk, if we could, I believe amend the attendance record. Madam Clerk? We're so happy you are back. We're so happy you're back. But if we could amend the attendance record, I think, to reflect that Counselor Baker and Counselor Siomo are here. Are we missing anyone else?
Nope, that is it.
Perfect. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you, Council President Campbell. I'm honored today to introduce the Council General of Japan that is with us today, Mr. Setsu Omori. I know that Boston and Japan have had friendly ties, and that's in one of Boston's sister cities is Kyoto in Japan. The Council General serves not only Boston but also New England. And the Council General and his staff work hard in helping people who want to visit Japan, offering events and education programs to our residents, and promoting strong cooperation between our two countries in trade and education. I also want to recognize the tremendous contributions of Japanese-Americans to our country as well. Japanese-Americans are our neighbors and colleagues. They contribute to our businesses, education, government, military, trade, and other areas. However, despite these contributions, Japanese-Americans were put in internment camps, as we all know during World War II, because of their race and ethnicity. I was recently talking to Representative Norman Mineta, the former Secretary of Transportation. He's someone who served in the U.S. military and then went on to serve in the federal government. But he and his family during World War II were put in internment camps because of their Japanese ancestry. That's a black mark on our country and one that we should never repeat again as a country. We are a country of immigrants, and our diversity is our strength. No matter the color of your skin, ethnicity, everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. I'm glad that the Japanese Council is here with us today, not only to further develop U.S.-Japanese relations, but also to remind us of the important, meaningful contributions of Japanese-Americans to our country and all immigrants to our country as well. At this time, I would like to recognize the Council General of Japan that is visiting with us now.
Honorable member of the City Council of Boston, and the Honorable Ed Flynn, thank you very much for a kind introduction for me and your mindful words for the Japanese-American. And the dear Boston citizens witnessing this session, thank you very much. I'm very honored to be assigned to the city of Boston. It was two months ago that I visited, I first come to Boston. And this city of Boston is well-known among Japanese people by the Museum of Boston of Fine Arts, that has a very huge collection of Japanese paintings and woodbooks. And the also Boston Symphony Orchestra is well-known for the Japanese conductor Seiji Ozawa conducted for a long time. Also, Red Sox is famous among Japanese for several Japanese excellent players, pitchers, used to play in this distinguished team. Having said that, there are approximately 10,000 Japanese citizens now living in Boston and its vicinity. Some of them are students and studying science and business and medicine, and also some are teaching at universities and some are medicine, medical people, studying and going through medical training in some of the institutions in Boston. And some of them are running a business, running a business of a restaurant, and they offering Japanese food to the Boston citizens. I'm very thankful for the members of the Boston City Council, as well as the citizens of Boston, for providing a very cordial atmosphere for Japanese citizens to pursue their goal of their life. And I'm very happy to see that the multi-ethnic environment in Boston is very convenient and comfortable for those Japanese citizens. Having said that, thank you very much again for Councilmember Dr. Flynn for giving me a precious opportunity to say something in front of the distinguished member of the council. Thank you very much.
Could our colleagues please join us for a photo? I'd also like to present our guest with a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice seeing you all again. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Moving on to the regular order of business. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1663, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $970,000 in the form of a grant awarded by Skanska USA Commercial Development, Inc., pursuant to the 1350 Boylston Street-Fenway-Boston Project Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of the grant is to fund the redesign and construction of Boylston Street as described in the 1350 Boylston Street-Fenway-Boston Project's transportation mitigation commitments.
Docket 1663 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1664, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $413,472 in the form of a grant for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund three domestic violence, excuse me, advocates assigned to police districts, a management analyst at the Family Justice Center, and a technology coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and records management system.
Docket 1664 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1665, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $402,785 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, a hub-and-core coordinator over time for specialist unit, and a technical coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and records management system.
Docket 1665 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1666, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $259,252 in the form of a grant for the Clean Vehicle Project awarded by the Mass Department of Energy Resources, to be administered by the Central Fleet Management. The grant will fund the purchase of liquefied petroleum gas fuel conversion kits for the city of Boston's pickup trucks in order to reduce CO emissions.
Docket 1666 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 1667 through 1671 together? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1667, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 9:40 p.m. on Thursday, November 28, 2019, until 2:25 p.m. on Tuesday, December 3, 2019. Docket number 1668, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 6, 2019. Docket number 1669, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Second Amendment to Report and Decision on the Brighton-Aleston Elderly Homes, Inc., also known as McNamara House, Chapter 121A Project, located at 210 Everett Street, Alston. Docket number 1670, notice received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, regarding the contract between the city of Boston and Cote Village, I'm sorry, Town Homes Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws. Docket number 1671, notice received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, regarding the contract between the city of Boston and the Cote Village Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Dockets 1667 through 1671 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1624, order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the city of Boston for FY 2020 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further that pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5C, as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value of all Class I residential parcels in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2020.
Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Our committee held the hearing this past Monday, December 2. Docket 1624 is an order for the city council to adopt classification and declare a residential exemption in the city of Boston for fiscal year 2020. Whether to adopt classification and the residential exemption are determinations that must be made by the council and approved by the mayor prior to certification of the city's tax rate by Department of Revenue. The order will implement the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, which shifts the burden of the tax levy away from residential property, and will adopt the maximum residential exemption of 35%, which allows owner occupants to realize savings on their property tax. Assessing Commissioner Nick Aronello testified at this hearing, explaining the two local options and the city's history of opting for the highest savings for resident taxpayers. The city relies heavily on property tax for city funds, but has always placed importance on providing maximum relief to resident taxpayers. As the Chair of the committee, I recommend that this ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to briefly thank my dear colleague and friend, the District Counselor from District 9, and the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. This is one of the most important consequential things we do every year, and it seems as though it's a bit of a formality, but I really appreciate the leadership that the District 9 Council has given on this thing. And one of the good byproducts that came from this hearing, not only is us allowing for the 35% residential deduction, but also doing a better job of alerting homeowners in Boston that they can and they should take advantage of this. It's difficult to see how many people don't even know what they are able to get back, and the fact that as property gets more expensive, as it becomes increasingly more expensive to live here, this is just a small piece of relief that we can offer some homeowners. And it's just very good news. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counselor Siomo, who's Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 1624. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1624 has been passed.
Docket number 1337, ordinance establishing the office of Inspector General within the city of Boston.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was obviously sponsored by our Council President. Hearing was held on November 7, in a working session this past Monday on December 2. At the working session, the committee heard testimony from Inspector General Kuna, Matt Cahill, Executive Director from the Boston Finance Commission, and Richard Iannella from the Boston Finance Commission, along with testimony on behalf of the administration from Neil Doherty. Inspector General Kuna expressed opposition to the ordinance and provided specific testimony about recommendations specifically to call his 24-hour fraud hotline, as well as to call his office that will provide training for city departments, the council, and the mayor's office. Matt Cahill and Richard Iannella provided testimony about the Finance Commission's work, specifically highlighting their extensive work for the city. They both expressed opposition to the ordinance, stating that the Finance Commission can achieve many of the same goals that were proposed by the Inspector General's office. So that said, also, Neil Doherty, on behalf of the administration, provided testimony that there were several charter violations of the ordinance, as President would written. So as a result of that, I'm recommending the docket remaining committee for further action, but through the Chair, give our Council President and lead sponsor an opportunity to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Camp?
Thank you, Counselor Siomo, and thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for calling for a quick working session, working with my office and the administration to get something on the books. I thought it was, for the most part, a very robust conversation and a continuation of our hearing in many respects. And I echoed at the working session that, you know, I do think we have some of the hardest-working city employees in the city of Boston or in the Commonwealth. I do not see our government as being corrupt or a place where corruption and fraud readily take place. I've been echoing that. This is an idea that came to my attention through some conferences I attended, and I've always thought it was a good idea. And given the fact that we did see a conviction of bribery for one particular bad employee, I thought this was timely to bring it forward, particularly as constituents come to us raising concerns about the process and the permitting process, and having concerns about that, of course, around that conviction of that employee. And then other concerns that continue to come up over the years with respect to areas where either city employees or those in the public feel like we're not living up to the policies and practices that we put in place to ensure good governance, transparency, accountability, and fairness. And so for me, the proposal of the IG is rooted in an ideal that Bostonians, I think, deserve a city government that is free of waste, corruption, grounded in transparency, and accountable to the people. And after those recent incidents, particularly the bribery one, and growing concerns around the permitting process, it was also interesting to learn that the Finance Commission, for example, and the State Inspector General's office did not get involved in those cases and were not involved. And for me, rather than continuing to bring in costly outside legal counsel to address these issues when they arise, getting reports and then letting those reports just sit on a shelf somewhere, this office can bring local, permanent, proactive, independent oversight of our government, conduct investigations in a public manner, issue reports, and push for enforcement of those reports' recommendations, all while, I believe, saving this city and taxpayers' resources and money. How do we make sure that the processes that we have in place to ensure transparency, fairness, and accountability, and good governance, whether in zoning and permitting, our city budgets, how we spend our money, policies ensuring equity, and other things, are working? That we are actually adhering to those policies and practices? By creating this position in this office, I think we have someone who residents and employees can go to directly, or will have someone whose residents and employees can go to directly, who can be proactive and transparent when looking into possible waste, not adherence to policy, corruption, or mismanagement, and be accountable to the public and not to the mayor or even the city council. I prioritized the value of independence when drafting this ordinance and looked at best practices across the country, including several municipalities that have an IG at the local level, so whether Chicago, Baltimore, New York, or Philly. And just recently, if you've been following the news, the mayor in Chicago actually fired her police chief after receiving a report from her Office of Inspector General naming some concerns with respect to his behavior. some concerns with respect to his behavior. And while I appreciate the work of the Finance Commission, most of whom are volunteers, of course, the State Inspector General, they have limitations, and they do not do everything that's envisioned in the ordinance. They are far removed. They only come in, and this was made abundantly clear at the working session, when they're called. I believe we have an opportunity here to create something that is local, that could work in partnership and collaboration with these existing agencies and others, while exceeding their jurisdiction in critical areas, operating independently from the mayor and city hall, and doing so proactively, not always having to receive a call. The State IG mentioned, for example, in numerous settings, that he'd like to go into BPS, and that it's not always easy. And I'm saying, yes, you should go into BPS. You should, for example, look at the $120 million transportation budget, or the $50,000 we just expended on a transportation consultant because we're not delivering good services in the transportation field. But how great would it have been if we had this office set up at the local level for someone to go into BPS after building trusting relationships, to have a conversation before we expended that additional $50,000, and to have deeper conversations around how we work on that transportation piece of the budget, for example, to limit the cost while delivering effective services? The Administration presented, as Counsel Flaherty referenced, a list of five issues concerning the city's charter. I do not think these legal concerns are insurmountable. I don't agree with the legal analysis, putting my legal hat on, of the Administration. And for me, the question I ask, and it continues to be a question I will continue to ask, is does the mayor and the Administration support the idea of this? And if they do, let's come to the table, roll our sleeves up, and get this done. I think calling for this type of office obviously isn't something the council does every single day, but I don't think we'd be here having this conversation if residents didn't reach out to us demanding more transparency and accountability around many processes. I think counselors ourselves also want to sometimes know more in terms of what our departments are doing. But I don't think we would have had these conversations, and the response I've gotten from those in the public would have been so great if the system was working just fine. So, in the next week, I hope to continue to engage not just all of my colleagues, of course, the mayor and the Administration, but one thing I will add is, I, one of the biggest edits in this version of the ordinance versus the old is that we've put in timelines to not have this go into immediate effect once it passes the council. There's months we've pushed it out. We've also added significant timelines to allow for a month, maybe even possibly a six-month process, and we could change that to be longer, for a thoughtful discussion around how we set this office up, who should inform what it looks like, the advisory board working in partnership with the council and the mayor to set this up, allowing for new counselors in a new term to inform the creation of this office. But in order to get to that step, we have to pass this ordinance, pass the idea itself. And so, I hope to continue to engage with each and every one of you, obviously in the next week, with the hopes that we get this first step passed, and then come back to the table, similar to what we did to the CPA, establish a process that is thoughtful and considerate, takes into consideration the Administration, colleagues, as well as the public, in setting up what I think would be an incredible office to ensure that we all do our jobs wonderfully, but most importantly, do it with a sense of accountability to the public and with an independent body that can actually help us do it in a way that doesn't offer favoritism or anything like that. So, I'm excited to work with each and every one of you. Thank you, and I thank you for allowing me to go a little bit longer with this throat situation. Thank you, Counsel.
Madam Clerk, please place docket 133, I would keep it in the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you. Docket number 0184, an ordinance reauthorizing condominium conversion protections in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0184 would grant a one-year extension to the current ordinance that provides tenants' protections to individuals facing displacement because of condominium or cooperative conversion. This matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Counsel Lydia Edwards, and Counselor Josh Zachem, and we had a hearing on December the 2nd, Monday, December the 2nd, and Counsel Edwards did an excellent job explaining that the current proposal is a one-year proposal rather than the typical usual five-year extension, and that was so that the council and Administration can continue to work together to address additional amendments that are needed to strengthen and expand the condominium conversion protection, so that the 2020 ordinance can be updated and have those protections put in, and then extend those protections for the period of five years. Chief Dillon explained that the current loopholes, including the practice of emptying buildings prior to the sale, that results in condominium conversions, and also noted the look-back provision could also be one of the amendments that we could add, as well as future potential amendments and the adjustment of relocation costs that are now currently five years old and may need an adjustment, along with giving authority to the city to strengthen those additional protections. So, Chief Dillon also noted that 89% of the conversions are happening to two- and three-family homes throughout the city, and that those, that's the category that's excluded from state law. State law currently defines a covered combination as four or more units. Addressing this issue would also go a long way and would require a home rule petition. So, for the aforementioned, I'm recommending that docket 0184 pass in a new draft. Let's get the one-year extension. Let's take advantage of the year, opportunity to put those necessary amendments and adjustments in place, and then come back and extend it for the five-year. And through the Chair, allow our colleagues, the two lead sponsors that have done great work in the space, on behalf of the council, an opportunity to address our colleagues.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to thank Counsel Flaherty for his leadership in holding a very quick hearing on the condo conversion. I want to thank Counsel Flynn for also coming and asking very good questions. I wanted to thank Counsel Zachem for your leadership in getting this done in 2014 and allowing us to continue this conversation. Ultimately, we realized, in talking with the Administration and several advocates, that when we come to the table to renew this condo conversion ordinance, we need to come with a lot more different, a lot of different stakeholders, and there are a lot of things on the table that we really need to have a robust conversation about. And we felt that it was not fair to our colleagues, but also to our advocates, to simply renew this ordinance for five years as it is, or to suggest all of these different things at the end of the year without having really good back and forth with everybody in the room. Things on the table that we feel we need to discuss include, not only, right now, there's relocation benefits at $10,000, but do they need to go up? Do they need to go down? What needs to trigger those relocation benefits? We also protect certain categories of individuals, those who are disabled, those who are elderly, those who are low to moderate income. Are there other categories of individuals that need protection? That protection includes a five-year extension or a five-year eviction notice, so that if they are going to clear out the condo, if you are elderly, if you are low-income, or low to moderate income, or if you have disabilities, you get five-year notice. So, are there other classes of individuals, veterans, so on and so forth, that need to be part of that? The other component is the loophole, not only clearing out people, but what other partners could we use to help us with that clear out? What came up in one of the discussions with advocates is working with the Registry of Deeds. Maybe before somebody files their final bill of sale with the Registry of Deeds, they need to certify that they actually notified all of the tenants or all of the former residents of the building. Again, these are ideas, but we didn't see how we could really implement these ideas or make true honest suggestions about them at this point. We also are looking at the two-to-three unit buildings. Now, we cannot do that through this condo conversion, but I think there's a tandem conversation that we will have to have as to whether we're going to look at two-to-three unit buildings on the condo conversion or any protections at all. And then finally, there's a question of enforcement. So, you can have all the rules in the world, but right now, what do you do when the tenants are gone and they have rights that they were not able to enforce? That's a real question. There are elderly people who are outside of the building that should have, by right, been able to get a five-year extension. So, these are all things that we can tackle, and I believe we can tackle and finish in a year. So, the proposal, again, is to take the protections that we have, push them back to 2020, to December 31, 2020, and in that time, have a different ordinance and robust conversation to make sure that we pass, when we pass the new ordinance and give it a five-year extension, it is as robust and as strong as we can make it.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Chair and my colleague and co-sponsor, Counsel Edwards, for their work on this and for ably representing me and sharing my thoughts on this issue, as I was unable to attend the hearing in person. This is something that I think was incredibly important that we did five years ago, and at the time doubled the relocation assistance that was given to folks, and made sure that we were working more cooperatively, more collaboratively with advocates and with other city departments to inform people of their rights under this legislation. And Counsel Edwards was quite right that enforcement is key on this, and so many of the other tenant protections we have in our state and city laws. But awareness is just as important. There are so many people who have no idea that if their building is being sold or converted to a co-op or a condominium, that there are these resources available. We have quite strong protections. This continues to strengthen it, and we need to continue this conversation to do that in the coming years. But that's a lot of money that someone has, can be entitled to, a lot of notice that they can be entitled to if they fall into some of those protected classes, but nobody knows about that. Not nobody, I shouldn't say. Not enough people know about it. And it's often folks who don't have the resources, perhaps aren't native English speakers, perhaps are just being given notices on official-looking paper that says, "You got to get out of here." And that's happening over and over again throughout our community. So, we need to couple the strengthening of the ordinance itself with awareness, with enforcement, with resources for the people across our city. I was proud to work on this and extending this five years ago. I am excited to vote in favor of this today and look forward, and I know it will be ably carried forward in the coming years to strengthen these provisions for people in the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say thank you first to Counsel Edwards and Counsel Zachem for filing this reauthorization, and for Counsel Flaherty as well for chairing this hearing. It is important that we have this condo conversion ordinance in place so that we can continue to protect our tenants who might face displacement due to condo conversions. So, I'll be voting yes to authorize it. We are in a housing crisis. We need to have all the tools available to help our working families stay in Boston. And the condo conversion ordinance is an important tool that provides protections such as a notice period, right of first refusal to purchase their unit, relocation assistance, and benefits. This is an important ordinance. I think we can use this as a roadmap for other types of measures to provide protections against displacement and unjust evictions, especially for seniors, persons with disability, our immigrant neighbors, and low-income residents. In the hearing, we talked about further strengthening this ordinance in the future. I hope that we can also talk about expanding the protections within the condo conversion ordinance to cover tenants facing displacement and eviction. We have seen longtime tenants are getting evicted with short notices, and with an expensive rental and housing market, it is very difficult for these tenants to find new homes in a short period of time. I think we should have a reasonable notice period and protection for all tenants facing eviction and displacement. I believe that tenants who have lived in properties for five years or more should be provided one year's notice to vacate following property transfers, along with information regarding resources available to assist them with searching for new housing. While seniors, the disabled, low-income residents should be afforded two years' notice. Reauthorizing this ordinance is important. I hope that we can continue using this ordinance as an example of what we can do to expand protections for tenants in our city. And again, I just want to say thank you to Counsel Zachem, Counsel Edwards, and Counsel Flaherty for working on this with the mayor's office as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Sorry, I forgot to mention also, Counsel O'Malley was also in attendance at the hearing, so I wanted to know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Counsel Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0184 in a new draft. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 10184 has been passed.
Docket number 1585, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, ordinances, Chapter 17. The purpose of this amendment is to allow the Inspeccional Service Department to recover costs for conducting inspections outside of normal business hours by charging a fee for such inspections.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This docket would apply to all divisions of Inspeccional Services as well as the party requesting the inspection. The matter was sponsored by our mayor, Martin J. Walsh, referred to the committee on November the 20th. The committee held a hearing on December the 3rd in the snowstorm and inquired about the process. We had Commissioner Dionne Irish, and Counsel Flynn had put the commissioners with the paces. He attended the hearing in support of the proposal. He had explained that the proposal would allow the ISD to recover costs of conducting outside inspections conducted outside normal business hours, and also provide a predictable cost for residents and business owners. He also explained that the current department efforts to collect fees for after-hour inspections is onerous and burdensome. In many instances, the chase is on because folks file for permits with LLCs, and after they get the permit and they get the certificate of occupancy, they dissolve the LLC and good luck chasing nothing. So, this is, I think it's more than appropriate. It's transparent and predictable. It captures real-time overtime costs, which is obviously two great news for the taxpayer, and also eliminates that chase for that reason that you'd be paying for the inspections upfront, and that allows us to recover, again, those costs in real time. So, based on the testimony, know that on behalf of the council, Counsel Flynn and I pushed that those fees be actually higher. We felt that a $250 fee was somewhat low, but Commissioner had explained that the analysis behind that cost took into consideration the actual after-hour inspection cost that are created by our employees. So, thought that if we went much higher than that, that wouldn't necessarily fairly reflect the amount that is exhausted on that inspection. So, we told them that we would accept that fee for now, and then in moving forward, that may be something that we may look to adjust in the future. So, that said, I'm recommending that docket 1585 ought to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counsel Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 1585. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1585 has been passed. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1672, Counsel Campbell for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1672. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1672 has been passed.
Docket number 1673, Counsel Campbell for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1673. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1673 has been passed.
Docket number 1674, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Janey.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1674. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1674 has been passed.
Docket number 1675, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Janey.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1675. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1675 has been passed.
Docket number 1676, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Flynn.
Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1676. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1676 has been passed.
Docket number 1677, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Flynn.
Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1677. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1677 has been passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Nope, we ran along. I'm informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters to be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the matters are so added. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. Anyone have any announcements? Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to quickly, well, first ask for permission from the body. Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Officer James Martin. He is our community service officer in East Boston. He has served the community extremely well, and he will no longer be serving in that capacity because he has been promoted, and that's a wonderful thing, but we will certainly miss him from the peace walks. He was He was there at the soup kitchen when it first started. He's come every Tuesday. He has been a wonderful bridge in assuring that all members of East Boston felt listened to, felt valued. He was there, and I just wanted him to know how much we will deeply miss him. I also want to welcome our new Community Service Officer, Joe Centolo, who has been so far at the trolley, has been at the soup kitchen. He's coming in there, and he's got some big shoes to fill. He's a great guy. He's born and raised in East Boston, and so it's for him, he's coming home. So, we welcome him with open arms, but just wanted to also recognize the great service of Officer Martin.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Any other counselors have an announcement? Our clerk has an announcement. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everyone, we will be sending each office a notice to let you know that if action is not taken on any matter that is in the green sheets by next week, they will be placed on file. And I know sometimes there's just time constraints, but that's just to let you know. You can also refile those matters in January, but everything other than what the mayor files will be placed on file if action is not taken. Just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like all guests, staff, and colleagues to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals.
For Counselors McCarthy and Flaherty, Kathleen Murphy Paris. For Counselor McCarthy, Maria O'Brien, Kyle McGonigal. For Counselors Flynn and Flaherty, Dolores Lane, Michael Williams Scudris, Gerald Sheppick. For Counselor Zachem, Howard Kessler. For Counselors Flynn, Baker and Flaherty, Lieutenant Detective Joseph Zink, John Jack Roach. For Counselor Baker, Richard Huck Finn. For Counselor Janey, Otis Mobley, and Joyce Sinclair. For Counselors McCarthy and O'Malley, Stephen Cushing. For Counselors McCarthy, O'Malley, and Flaherty, Margaret Peggy Linden Walsh. For Counselor O'Malley, Charles Zamito. For Counselor Edwards, James Alosi. And for Counselors Asabi George and Flynn, Deborah Albanese Kilduff. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, December 11th, at 12:00 noon at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.